We have some of our city council meeting to order before you stand. I'd like to present your statement, Ron. Who's going to lead this? I'm going to lead it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have somebody really amazing in our presence tonight. And I think if you look on the dais, you'll see an unusual addition even though everybody loves Girl Scout cookies. But the Girl Scout cookies that you see in front of you, which is... What's it? Trefoils? Oh, it's yours favorite, my second favorite, has a picture of a Girl Scout. And this Girl Scout was chosen out of 25,000 girls across the country. She's a Laverne resident and a freshman at Bonita High School. So I'd like to have her. So I have some stuff written down, but I think it would be better to hear it from Caitlin. So Caitlin, why don't you tell us your story about how this happened? And kind of a little bit about yourself, would you please?
So hi, everyone. My name's Caitlin Roney. I'm a 14-year-old. I'm a freshman at Bonita High School right now. I wrote down a little bit because I'm very scatterbrained. I'm very thankful for this opportunity. This is very cool. I wasn't really expecting this. I wasn't expecting any of this really when I applied. As our mayor said, out of 25,000 girls in the nation, I was one of the girls chosen. Only six of us were chosen. So it was very selective, very cool. It's been an amazing experience so far. I've been able to be through this a spokesperson for Girl Scouts through my face being on the trefoil box. I was able to travel to New York to meet with female executives from all these different companies that gave us business tips and all about their experiences on how they became as successful as they are now. To say I was amazed is...I don't know. When I first found out, so many emotions went through my head and so many emotions are going through now. It's just been an amazing experience so far. And I'm ranting a little, sorry about that.
You look great for a 14-year-old.
I actually had to stay quiet about this for about two years. So I had to sign the ending. Yeah, I know, I can keep a secret if you trust me.
For two years at least.
Yeah, for two years at least, yeah. Yeah, so I couldn't tell anybody. I couldn't say anything about it. And Girl Scouts has slowly been doing the release for the boxes that you see now with my face on it. Through Girl Scouts, I got to learn like so many different skills, especially through winning this. We have the five basic skills of business from your Girl Scout cookies that you buy from us: decision-making, goal-setting, business ethics, people skills, and money management. That's like the most important. Throughout my journey, I've definitely been able to develop my skills as a leader. Currently, right now, Bonita, I'm the vice president for our freshman class council. I've been in leadership programs ever since I was in elementary school. So that's definitely helped me further a person and be the spokesperson I am now. I mean, I'm using my people skills, talking to all of you. Currently, I achieved the highest award I could at my stage of Girl Scouts, my silver award. I'm going to be getting that in April soon. I also have my leadership torch. I know not all of you can see it. It's a tiny little silver thing. But that shows that I'm able to present myself to people and be able to voice and talk about things like I am now. This has also allowed me to be in something called the Girls Advisory Borough, which is another selective leadership program for Girl Scouts. Through that, I've actually been on an interview with ABC 7 News, KTLA 5. I've been on Buzzfeed with Ladylike. And I've been able to do amazing things like this, like meeting with our mayor. I've never...when I first started, I never thought I'd be able to do any of this, but here I am, talking to everyone and talking to our mayor. Like, wow! So this, over my years of being a Girl Scout, I've actually sold a total of 7,000 boxes of Girl Scout cookies. Last year, I sold a total of 3,000. And this year, I'm hoping to sell 2,500. I'm extremely busy with my scheduling. So far at school, I've been involved in our debate team, my marching band, color guard, choir, ASB membership, recycling club, a lot of things. So that's...I've limited my goal this year.
25,000.
So I wanted to thank everyone again. Thank you very much for letting me talk to everyone today about that. I'm selling cookies too, so feel free to buy my Girl Scout.
Okay, so we're going to do something tonight I don't remember ever doing. And we're going to have some fun with it. First of all, she has a card reader with her. That's right. That's what I grew up learning in Girl Scouts. And so one of the things that my wife and I do is we buy cases of Girl Scout cookies and we send them overseas. So if you think, boy, I don't need to eat, you know, a case of cookies or even a box of cookies, you don't have to. But if you can buy one, they will send it overseas. And Caitlin would be thrilled to death to help you with that venture. And so as soon as, as soon as we're done here with the presentations, because we have some other ones, and then, so Caitlin will be outside with her plate reader, making sure that you don't leave without getting the cookies that you so deservedly wanted. So what we're going to do, I would like, we're going to do a little exercise right here. And that means that you get up and look underneath your chair, because there's post-its 1 through 8 underneath your chair. So if you can please look under your chair and see if you have a post-it.
Roger, who took my post-it? Nancy took mine.
Okay, do you have this...do people have their post-its with their numbers on them? Oh, I see some numbers out there. Okay, so I'm going to ask Caitlin to please draw a number. And that number, she will bring you a box of her Girl Scout cookies. Look at all the badges on the back. Holy Mac, they're going to need a bigger vest. Number five. Who's got number five? And yes, you can eat them here and you can pass them. Number, um, probably number six. Number six. Number four. Who's got number four? Alan. Number eight. Who's got number eight? Is there some, is there an empty chair that...
Check my chair.
Somebody that needs to... Number one. Who's got number one? Suzanne, which number do you have? Amona? Number seven. Who has number seven? There she is. Number three. Number three. Number two. Who has number two? Okay, so the last, the ticket that did not get number eight. Did we find number eight? Well, I guess our city clerk got a box of cookies. We also have a certificate. And we have a in-and-out gift certificate, in-and-out gift certificate, over $10. And this is to Caitlin Roney in recognition of being selected as a face of Trefoils Girl Scout Cookies. Laverne, City of Laverne, appreciate your commitment to the Girl Scouts of America. It's a great organization. Congratulations, Caitlin. We certainly have some great people in the audience. And tonight, we're going to recognize two yearly awards. And both, one's called the Jack Huntington Award and one is called the Jim Scranton Award. Recognize volunteers that have made outstanding contributions and performed exemplary service to the city and to our community. Each recipient received an individual pride of Laverne plaque, and their names are placed on a perpetual plaque displayed inside City Hall. And we're going to start with the Jack Huntington Award, named after Jack Huntington, who moved to Laverne in 1970. Despite heavy professional obligations and tight commitments to the U.S. Naval Reserves, Jack became actively involved in the community as a volunteer. He was active in various local organizations, including the Laverne J.C.'s, Laverne Little League, and the youth basketball program. Jack also served as the City of Laverne's Commissioner for more than 15 years, completing two terms on the Parks and Recreation Commission, as well as two terms on the planning commission. Jack Huntington was a citizen volunteer who exemplified the pride of Laverne and his name in his honor. And at this time, I would like to ask Denny Sharp to please come forward. I'm not sure I've ever seen him with a coat on. I am the chair, and I'm going to talk a little bit about this to the Friends of the Fourth. He has been the treasure to the penny for 40 years on the Friends of the Fourth and never missed a meeting. He's a long, long time resident, moved to Laverne, I believe, in the late '60s. '67. He has served on Laverne Rotary Club for years, Laverne Chamber of Commerce, downtown Business Improvement District, volunteered for RSVP with the Laverne Police Department since 2000, so for 15 years. You see the blue shirts? That's exactly what I expected, Denny. I'm looking around saying, where is he? And I see, I see the blue shirts with the badges on it that help us be as safe as we can be. He comes in with a coat and tie. Well, he got the color, right? Shirt. Yeah, you're dressed for the Fourth of July, yeah. He's an ad cyclist and has been known to log in 40,000 miles in four years. We can name the bike lanes after you. In 2013, he helped form the Laverne Bicycle Coalition. In addition to his service locally, Denny also served in the United States Navy. Denny exemplifies the pride of Laverne with his commitment and service to our community. We are proud to honor you with this award, Denny, and everything that you have done. As all recipients, they, they, they get the honor of telling us who they are and a little bit about themselves. Denny?
I'm my wife's husband. I grew up in South Pasadena, and when I moved to Laverne, I fell in love with it. And it's really been a wonderful thing to be able to volunteer. I started my company, and one of my first customers was on the Fourth of July Committee. And he got me into the parade. And it's been going on ever since. But I've always taken great pride in working with the people in Laverne. Wonderful.
Why don't you introduce Bobby?
Bobby? Mark said that you have to come up here.
There's one camera in the room.
The second award that we talked about is the Jim Scranton Award, was named after longtime resident Jim Scranton, who was a member of the Youth Sports Committee since its inception. In 1986, he formed the Laverne Laser Soccer Club Organization to provide youngsters an opportunity, opportunity to play soccer at the highest level. Jim also spent five years on a sports, the City Sports Park Committee, which resulted in the development of 35 acres of sports fields for the community. And it was part of this, part of him and a few others, that created the Sports Park at Bonita High School. That's amazing. So we shared that facility with the high school. Resulted in, okay. He also participated in the city's women's soccer program as a coach. Jim is survived by his wife Susan and their children. The Youth Sports Committee recommended that the Pride of Laverne Sports, Youth Sports Volunteer Award be named in the honor of Jim Scranton. He was posthumously honored with your inaugural award. This year, the Jim Scranton Pride of Laverne Award is being presented to Carolina Copolo. When I read what she's done, everybody in this room will say, she's not old enough to do all that stuff. And she's not. So, but I am going to go ahead and read it. She has volunteered for AYSO for nearly 20 years and has continued to make a lasting impact on the city and the community. Carolina first joined AYSO as a volunteer coach for her son Andrew's under-six soccer team with her husband Mark. She went on to coach her daughter's soccer team, and then she joined the AYSO board, became a child and volunteer protection advocate. She has served as treasurer and assistant regional commissioner before accepting the position of regional commissioner. She is a staple in the region that could be found unlocking gates early on Saturday mornings, overseeing team distribution and ratings nights, lining up teams at picture day, accepting player forms. All of this while having a smile on her face and a cup of coffee not too far away. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor Kendrick and City Council for this award. There is no possible way I could accept this award without the love, support, and hard work of my family, my four children, and my husband. The U6 player that was talked about is now a coach of the Laverne Lasers with Jim Scranton. If there's one thing I can leave you with tonight, it is, please, no one has a problem investing in E-Trade, Ameritrade, 401K, 457, and all the like. Please invest in youth. Because you won't get paid, but I guarantee you will be compensated beyond belief. So I would like to ask my husband, Mark, to come up. He is, I also... As distinguished gentleman before me said, I am my husband's wife and I am my children's mother, and I am proud of that. So thank you so much.
Boy, do I think we hit a jackpot tonight. Before we take a break, we're going to do some quick announcements. We'll get the podium. Can I get some help? Thank you, Chair. Anybody that would like to make an announcement, please come to the podium and let us hear what you have to say. Thank you. Okay, we will, thank you, everybody. We're going to take a few minute break. We've had some honorees and family and so forth, so we'll take a little bit of a break. And a break meeting coming up, but I think you'll probably want to leave. But remember, there's Girl Scout cookies to buy, so get your credit card out of your wallet on the way out. And Caitlin, make sure that she takes good care of it. I want you to take cash too, if you want. Thank you. We'll recess for about 10 minutes. We get back on the consent calendar. Roll call. Here. You'll notice there is an empty seat. Normally, Charlie Rosales sits between Mayor Davis and Rob Carter. Muir is, I'm sorry, Charlie is recovering from a replacement, replacement surgery, doing well, but he's resting, and so he won't be here tonight, but should be back next week. On the consent, there is somebody that's asked to concern on item D, which is the Housing Regional Housing Trust. Danica? Bonita? Bonita, I'm sorry. Bonita?
Good evening, all of our residents and city council members. I have numerous questions pertaining to our issues when we ask them. If the city decides to vote in favor of participating in this housing assistance program in the San Gabriel Valley, what are going to be the true benefits to the city, other than assisting those with housing issues? Obviously, we know there's a homeless problem here and we have to address it, but I can say personally, no one wants to live next door to a homeless housing project. So I would like to know whether the city is proposing that these housing be constructed? And has any of the necessary environmental impact reports, traffic, utility use of reports been conducted? If so, what are the findings and why haven't they been available to residents? And exactly what would be the cost to the city? According to the gender report, it says that private funding and measure bonds would be part of the financing. If both of those fail, what would be the cost to the city? As everybody in this room knows, that the city has incurred liabilities over the last two years. So incurring more debt to the city, I think, would be detrimental, even though this would be a project for positive. Financially, it would be for the negative to know how the city can address that. Thank you.
Is anybody else that would like to address this issue? Can we answer any of the questions?
Yeah, I think I might be able to answer most of those myself. I do have others in the audience that if I mess up, just say, hup-hup. I've got somebody from, Caitlin from the COG, as well as Maya, who has been our in-house person that has been handling. But nonetheless, there is really no project right now that is being considered. So that is why there is not an IR or anything. There's not a project that is even being contemplated at this point. This Regional Housing Trust Fund that is starting in joint powers with the, I think it's 20 cities in the San Gabriel Valley, to help collaborate and give access to opportunity for funds, should projects somewhere in the area, somewhere within the San Gabriel Valley, or even something more subregional, that we could then tap into. It would be a separate entity that would be reviewing those applications when they come forward. So this opportunity for us is to participate and to be able to consider projects or funding for projects, should we have them and they go through the proper environmental process down the road. As far as the cost to the city of Laverne, this current year, because we pursue grants through Measure H, one of the goals and one of our, one of the goals within that grant was to pursue funding for alternative affordable housing. This meets one of the requirements of one of those grants, so we're able to use that grant funding to pay for our first year membership. grant funding to pay for our first-year membership. After that, it will be up to the discretion of the council to decide whether to continue on or not.
Okay. We have motion to accept.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Thank you for your questions. We will move to item seven, and that's the plea debatement protest, Jerry.
And Councilmember Furr has a conflict on this, as she part of the association and assigned the properties that is, will be assessed.
And you want staff to complete this?
I'll make it.
Thank you.
This is the annual public hearing. You actually noticed this at your last meeting, if you remember, that this would be the time and opportunity for people to come in and share if they had any concerns. There were, I think, eighty-plus properties that were identified in the city of Laverne, and they're, it's important to note, these are undeveloped properties that would be inspected by the county for what might be the potential for need of need of debatement. The property owners have been sent notices that either said that they were, there was just an inspection done, or that further work is required by them. This is the opportunity for the property owner to protest that review, I guess. Following this, there will be a additional action on putting whatever the charges were for the need of debatement that needed on their property for the next tax year. I should point out, what is included here are three of the parcels that are part of Sierra Laverne now, that's now considered undeveloped. The fourth parcel, which is considered developed, is because of where the banquet facility resides, that actually doesn't get inspected by the county, but it gets inspected separately by the city. So, all those parcels are identified.
Great. Any questions?
No.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. If there's anybody that would like to address the council on this item, please come over. Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and if there's no further questions, accept the motion. Second, both please. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just if I may, prior to a public comment, over the last week or so, there's been a couple of comments, or at least issues that have come up, that council members have shared with me that I think may warrant at least some clarification by staff, not necessarily report, but I did one involving Sierra Laverne, and then another involving Station Three and some of the other issues regarding the fire department. So, I've asked Eric Shear and Chief Leonard to give just a brief review or some input for the council's benefit and for the community, just hopefully what might be some questions.
Thank you.
Good evening. As the city manager mentioned, there have been, we said comments in the community about the status of Sierra Laverne, and whether or not it actually can be built upon based on the city zoning. So, just real briefly, there are two overlaying documents that kind of control development in the city. First and foremost is the general plan, which is our guiding document for basically a twenty year period, as the council is aware, we're currently in the process of updating our general plan, with hopes that in the next six months, that's completed. The general plan's designation of the Sierra Laverne Golf Course is open space. That does not allow those parcels to be developed, regardless of the underlying zoning. The underlying zoning for this property is zoned A1 or agricultural. While the zoning code does allow one home on per parcel in the A1 zone, the overlying general plan designation of open space would actually preclude even that from occurring. So, as stated previously in these chambers and on the city's website, which is still accessible under the, under the facts page, Sierra Laverne Country Club is not, is not developable today. That does not mean an applicant can come in and request a change of the general plan designation to allow it to be developed, which would include a whole other, a lot of other types of applications, including a full environmental document that would have to go along with that. To date, staff has been clear to any developers that have been interested in the property that staff cannot support it. The council also has made that clear on multiple occasions, that there's no city support for development. There has been no activity recently from developers or inquiries from developers about interest in developing the course. We believe that that word has been, or sent out clearly. So, there's no new updates. We have a good person that works with Western Golf, who is a representative of the property ownership, who is in constant contact with staff and the police department. Anytime anybody's supposed to be on-site to do any kind of repair work or removal of previous equipment, so that's all been very well communicated. Anytime the city's having an issue that need to be resolved, it's resolved within the same day of calendar. So, we're very happy with the person that's currently working with us on any outstanding issues when they do come up. But again, the zoning does not allow development of the course, and there's no recent activity by any developers that have been in discussions with the city to explore those options. So, I don't, we have to answer any other further questions that the council might have?
Eric, I've talked to a number of residents and on Country Club, as you come down and just before you make the turn, there's the two gates approaches that, on the side approach, that we could maybe have the developer, or the people that don't, clean it up a bit. Also, the course has started to look a little shabby. I mean, it's starting to get overgrown, obviously it's raining, but it's kind of starting to get high now in some of the spots. Maybe check it out and clean up a bit.
Okay, just to clarify, you said Country Club, but did you mean birdie on the curb?
Just, no, actually, no, well, that too, yes, actually that too, birdie, but also Country Club, where you have the two approaches where the carts go across.
Oh, okay, with the cart.
And then the joggers are on the birdie portion, where's the joggers come across, that, that area too, just to kind of clean it up in the approach, just, you know.
So, we'll make that mention to them. The properties on birdie, though, are not owned by the natural parohide, Sierra, by the ownership of the Sierra Laverne Country Club. It is either Department of Water and Power property. They've been made aware that they are now responsible for maintaining that area, as the lease agreement with the property owner has expired. So, we have other property owners that do have responsibility in the general area, but the golf cart paths would be the main property, so we'll make note of that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for giving the opportunity to update you on issues and our deployment resources within the Laverne Fire Department. As you recall, about one month ago, I stood in front of the council and advised you that because of our manpower shortage, we are going to be rounding out West Grand Avenue sixty-three. It is proven that this time we've been giving update on mitigation efforts we put in place and the effects that they've had on our deployments program within the fire department. Specifically, January seventeenth, we've, we've browned out Rescue Ambulance sixty-three. What that means, in layman's terms, is we closed one paramedic unit in the city, which was also an ambulance. The mitigation efforts that we've put in place were put in place to help lessen any impact for our citizens and make sure we continue to respond to all the medical fire emergencies within the city within the appropriate response times. One of the things that took place since the seventeenth of January, and specifically on January twenty-first, we started going through our, Yalla County Fire Department for our dispatch. One of the things that that allowed us to do is to participate in what they call tiered dispatching. In our previous dispatching procedures within the city, every medical aid got a fire engine and a paramedic unit. Through the tiered dispatching, there's some, more of a triage that's done, and we don't send a paramedic unit to every medical aid if the dispatch doesn't feel warranted. That's worked out to be very effective for us in keeping the one paramedic ambulance we have available in the city, available for the more critical calls. So, the changes we've done, or the mitigation that we've put in place, was Rescue Ambulance sixty-one that remains in service, responds to all the medical aids requiring a paramedic unit in the city. On critical patients, they will escort that patient to the hospital. On the less severe patients, we're utilizing a third party or a care ambulance to provide that transportation. Again, that helps keep our one paramedic unit that we have left in the city available for the other calls. It's important to note that no calls for service have gone unanswered since we browned out Rescue Ambulance sixty-three. But also, we have no, we have had no delay in dispatching because the resources weren't available. We've been able to answer every call when the alarm has come in, not always by ourselves, sometimes with the assistance of Los Angeles County providing a paramedic unit into our city to assist. That's how we're dealing with the medical aid component of it. With the fire component of it, it's, that risk still exists within our city, still exists for our employees. We've had eleven personnel on duty prior to the rounding out of Rescue Ambulance sixty-three. Now, we have a fire, effective firefighting force of nine personnel on duty. That comes into play when we go to major emergencies within the city, whether it's a building fire, a grass fire, a traffic accident with multiple agents, those types of incidents, where we may need to lean on all of our resources, and all those resources may only mean the total of nine people. To mitigate that, we've worked with our partners in Los Angeles County Fire Department to provide the resources if we need them for major, other major emergencies. We haven't had an issue over the past month where that, where that has been. More importantly, how are we gonna fix this and get back to where we were before with having all of our resources staffed? I made two job offers to individuals last Thursday, to start on March second. Unfortunately, on Saturday, I received, we received phone call from one of them stating that he took a job with another agency. Unfortunately, this is something that we're dealing with going forward, and it's not just us, it's most of the fire agencies throughout Southern California. I'll talk more about that in a moment. But we've got one in the hopper, we've made a job offer to him, he's starting the academy on March second, we hope to get him on the floor, or we will get him on the floor two weeks after that. We have additional four, four candidates, or four firefighter paramedics going through the background process right now. We hope to make them job offers in April, with another mini-academy to be conducted during April, and have those folks onboard before the end of April. We currently still have nine open or vacant positions within the burn fire departments. Six are actual vacancies, and three are employees that are offered extended periods of time. Even with the brownout of Rescue Ambulance sixty-three, we still have over thirty twenty-four-hour shifts a month that the existing personnel are working overtime shifts to cover, just to maintain staffing on the units that are still in service with the fire department. Recruitment remains our highest priority as far as filling these positions, and we're moving forward with recruitment with the intent to fill every open position. Like I stated a moment ago, many fire agencies throughout Southern California are dealing with these same recruitment issues that we are here in the city of Laverne. Smaller fire agencies similar to Laverne are struggling with retaining, not only retaining the firefighter paramedics, but then the larger agencies are using us as their farming ground to fill their resource needs. But it gets very frustrating. In summary, the changes in form of the model, along with our mitigation efforts that we put in place to deal with the fire and EMS response in the city have been working. Unfortunately, the retention of existing firefighter paramedics and recruitment of new firefighter paramedics remains our biggest challenge in the fire department.
Questions?
I guess, one question I have is, could you go into the tiered dispatching process a little more specifically? It sounds like in some cases, some calls, only an engine would go out, and then in other calls, an engine and a paramedic unit would go out, and then in other situations, we might be calling for mutual aid at the same time. Is that, is that roughly what I'm hearing?
Roughly, but let me give you a couple of examples to hopefully make it more clear. So, a nine-one-one caller called and spoke to the dispatcher, and they were describing, somebody had fallen off the bicycle and had cuts to their knee or their arm, and they felt that they needed an assessment. We, the dispatcher, based on the assessment and talking with the nine-one-one caller, would make a determination of what level of response is set. That may just be a fire engine with a BLS ambulance. We're fortunate in Laverne that even if it's just a fire engine going out there, it always has a deterrent on it. But when the fire engine gets on scene, if they feel that that patient more in further care, they can always request an additional paramedic unit. Same scenario, if the caller says the individual had fallen off the bicycle and are unconscious in the street, that's automatically gonna get a fire engine and a paramedic unit response system. Now, as far as leaning on other resources, other agencies for resources, those would typically be on multiple calls at the same time in the city, or for calls that require what we call an effective firefighting force. A typical building fire response, we're trying to get minimum of fifteen people on scene. So, just out of the gate on those responses, we'd request resources from the currying agencies, which in our case is all without accounting, to assist us on this.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Okay, I have a question. We talked, I heard you say that our paramedic transport unit, that we have one, and then you called for extra through CARE?
Correct.
Okay, so, don't we have two paramedic trucks?
What, we do. We have Rescue Ambulance sixty-one and Rescue Ambulance sixty-three, but sixty-three is the one that's been browned out or temporarily closed because of our personnel shortage. Now, for the confusion, you may see Rescue Ambulance sixty-three driving throughout the city. It is currently, the vehicle itself is in service because sixty-one is down to repair. So, there's one paramedic ambulance that is housed outside of patient sixty-four.
Chief, I have a question. You mentioned that if, if somebody falls off a bike and they're conscious, and they're just, just send a truck, an engine, but isn't it true that the captain and the engineer and the firefighter, paramedic are all paramedic certified?
Almost exclusively, that is true. There, we don't have, not everybody is a paramedic certified, most everybody.
So, the chances, even without the ambulance, if we've got three certified paramedics are going out on that call?
At least two.
Great.
The big problem, what is your biggest problem? I understand we're having an issue with the vacuum from all the other agencies pulling experienced people, and given what we've been going through with our fire department over the last two or three years, is there a pay difference between the county and other agencies that, I mean, obviously, you've got countless people that are coming in that can fill the, you know, fill the gap, but is it, is it the pay difference, the benefits? I mean, what is, what is, as far as you're concerned, what is the biggest issue?
Well, having been an academy graduate, looking for a job as a firefighter, I can tell you what you're looking for right out of the gate is just a job. You just want to start somewhere. I started in a couple of little cities before I ended up with a larger agency. That's not uncommon. But when you're looking at putting applications in different locations, there's certain things you look for. You look for opportunities within that, that organization. We've got opportunity within the city of Laverne, no doubt. Larger agencies, larger city fire departments may have hazmat units, urban search and rescue teams, larger city county, county, state agencies made a helicopter program for paramedics responding in helicopters. Those things are really cool to do, and that might be what, what gets your attention. I mean, it might be the area that you're living. I, I don't want to talk the specifics of the larger areas, we could, we could provide the most money out there, the best benefits out there, and that may help us with retention. I also believe that one of the, one of the unfortunate parts of our current delivery system within Laverne is that we, our paramedics operate off of rescue ambulances. That's not a common occurrence in most fire departments. Most fire departments, the paramedics operate off of squads or engine companies or even truck companies. So, when you, to come to work for the city of Laverne as a firefighter, paramedic, and you know you're going to be assigned to an ambulance, it's not very appealing to people because they're basically, if you look at the care ambulance driving up and down the street, look at the two individuals in the front seat, your first thought's gonna be, are they old enough to be sitting up there? Because they're just young kids. And that's where people start their, their emergency services, education, their experience in, in our first responders.
Thank you.
Just a couple of clarifying things that I have heard, so to confirm, Station Three is not being rounded out due to funding, considering staffing availability at this point.
Correct.
And then are, do you have any concerns with our equipment readiness or the status of equipment that we have within the department?
I know that we have an ongoing effort to improve our apparatus. We currently have a new Type One engine that's on order to replace some of our aging fleet, but other than that, I'm on specific equipment issues, no.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to item eight, that's a public comment. Before we get started, just want to make sure that everybody's aware, we're gonna continue the policy, if you've spoken once, let somebody else have their term. If somebody has gotten up and talked about things that exactly the trigger to talk about, if you can make it brief, we appreciate it. We want everybody to speak. There may be a lot of speakers tonight. We're gonna make sure everybody that wants to speak has a chance to speak, and so we'll get started. I have speaker cards, if you have a desire to speak. There's speaker cards right up here that our city clerk has, and they're also at the podium. If you don't need a card to speak, we'd sure like to have you fill one out on these things, please. So, we'll start with Gil, Eddie. So we'll start with Gil Ayde.
Good evening there, City Council, City Manager, City Attorney. Good evening. Just want to come in real quick and just say that, you know, the time for healing is coming. March three will be behind us and we'll be able to move on. But my concern is that as I come up here and speak and share with so many people my history with this city, my past and the fact that I've had so many opportunities and brought up a family that is wonderful and have so many friends and I want to acknowledge Anna. She and I have become friends. I want you to know that. Become friends. And I want you to know that she touched my heart because someone out in the atmosphere decided that whatever it is that I'm doing, I need to take it back to the ghetto. And that was the comment that was made. And I want you to know that Anna and I had a good conversation about that. Now, that statement given to someone other than someone like me of another race would have really garnered a lot of discussion. But I was surprised to find on Nextdoor Laverne and the other comments that was only less than a handful of people who reacted to that comment. And it was quite surprising to me, given how much I love this community and the city. I would think that there should be outrage over a statement for me to take something back to the ghetto. Yes, I share with everybody that I'm from Compton. I didn't say I wasn't proud that I was from Compton. I said I was from Compton. It was my upbringing. It makes me what I am today. And so I'm very proud of that. And I wear Compton proudly on my vest. And I want you to know that this whole issue of attacking people and attacking Chase, a very fine restaurant that we finally got into the city and the fire department kind of consuming all activity in the city and everything we're doing for years and years and the comments that are going back and forth, that's got to stop. And where's my ninety-six-year-old mother-in-law? She says, "Stop the foolishness. We've got to move on." And I'm looking for a leader going forward. And I've always found that Don Kendrick has been a leader for us in this city. And I just want to say that. I also want to say that the city council, including Tim, have been wonderful working together and getting things done. However, there are times when I'm just questioning whether or not it's good enough for the council to say, "We're good listeners. We like to listen." I need someone who wants to be the new mayor to be able to give me the vision and where we're going to be taking the city. Not that I just listen and I do whatever it is that you guys want me to do. I don't know what we want you to do. You're the leader. You take us there. Again, I just want to say that I love this city. I want the comments to stop such as telling me I was wallowing in the mud. That was another comment. And I'm just amused by the fact that we're still dealing with elementary types of kindergarten comments. Let's be real. Let's be grown up. Let's be professional. And Anna and I, we're going to work together. We're going to turn the city around. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty Gladereau.
I would say my things I want to make. I've heard in the community, there has been, there was a rumor that this is with regards to the school district, that they were, that the school district was supporting a candidate. I called the district today, talked to Carl. He said absolutely not. As always, they support no one in particular. They wish everyone the best and wanted to go, he wanted to go on to say that as always, whoever does come out on top in this race, that he and the district will support. Individual board members, as is their right, have supported candidates. Have, actually, they've supported both candidates, wanting again to let the committee or the community know that at the end of the race and at the end of the election, that whoever is elected, they will support. And I just wanted to make sure that that was understood by the community, that the district itself has not made a resolution, the school board has not taken out a resolution. Individual members are supporting candidates, which is their right. On a personal note, I never did because I think it might use the waters because it makes it look like it's the district doing it or it's individuals, but I digress. The point I wanted to make is that they do not individually or as a district, a board or a district, support any one candidate. They do issue all.
Thank you, Patty. John Wilson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm here today to speak in favor of the tax issue that's on our ballot this March 3rd. I just wanted to say when I first heard about it, I was one of those, "Oh crap, there we go." We're in rate taxes. We're not paid. But then I decided to do, you know, what we should all be doing when we're going in elections is do your homework, find out what this is all about. Fortunately for me, I ran into some of the people that are running for office. I also have a very good friend, David Applewing, who is like a dictionary. The city develops a dictionary that pretty much everything else you want to know. And so I really started to look into this and I did start to see what this was really about. And what this really is about is to keep Laverne running, from what I can tell. That this extra tax that we would be paying would actually cap us out as far as the state is concerned and I understand that. But the money would be here, stay here in Laverne and we would be able to use the money to continue to run the city. And so these are things that I really had to look into to say, okay, now what does this really mean for us? And if we want to continue to have our police department, if we want to continue to see Santa Claus on the fire department, thank you guys for doing that. If we want to continue to operate our city independently of the county and of the state, we're going to need to be able to do something exactly like this. So I did also do some further homework and I went to a meeting last night specifically about this tax and I was able to find out a lot more. So I'm able to make a much better informed decision and support this tax. But what I want people to understand is, if you don't take the time and effort to go figure out what it is you're voting for and get that information, you may make a decision that will impact you in the future, i.e. Claremont voted that tax down in November, I believe it was.
Yes.
I believe a few weeks ago, the city council of Claremont decided that they were going to try and contract out their police department, lack of funds, right? So now the city residents are up in arms and they may have been able to avoid that as we pass the tax. Do we want to be sitting here six months from now up in arms against city council? Because the city council has to do something to pay for services that they can no longer afford. So I'm in favor of the tax. I urge everybody that's going to be voting on the 3rd to take a look at what it's really about and make an informed decision. Not like when I first looked at it and went, "Oh crap, another tax." Okay? That's not the way to vote. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Nen Hernandez.
Good evening, Nen Hernandez. I'm with the Fairplex. As we're talking here tonight about voting and about the elections, I just wanted to come and provide a reminder to everyone that the Fairplex has been designated as an LA County Vote Center. So we're actually an eleven-day vote center, which is the longest, starting on February 22nd going through March 3rd. So we will be open from February 22nd to March 2nd, eight to five. March 3rd from seven AM to eight PM. All LA County residents can vote at the Fairplex. There are no longer the designated precincts. You can now vote at any of the vote centers. So we invite you to come out and visit us to cast your vote. You'll be able to enter our gates through Gate One off of McKinley. There is no charge for parking, so please don't let them hurt you. And then any residents outside of LA County, you unfortunately are not able to vote there. But we are a designated drop-off area, so you are able to drop off your ballot there as well. So I just wanted to provide that to you guys.
Thank you. Gate, is it Gate One, the which building?
So it's going to be under the grandstand, which is what we call Club One, right next to Avalon. So if you've ever gone to Fair, it's right next to DIY.
Thank you.
Are you going to tacos?
But we will have coffee and good-
Only on Tuesdays.
Thank you.
Bruce Becker.
Oh crap, not another tax hike. All right. Last month, I tried to inform the city of Laverne three ways that this was a lousy way to reach-
Sir, would you please address the city council? Thank you.
And I talked about value and I talked about in the next forty years, the sales tax would be fifteen percent or whatever. I got some more to add. There are fifty-eight counties in California. Twenty-six thousand have a sales tax rate of seven point five percent. Twenty-four others have a rate in the seven percent range. LA alone is all alone at nine point five. Even San Francisco is eight point five. Okay? Now, if you pass the sales tax, Laverne will have the highest sales tax rate in the United States. Everybody heard that? The highest sales tax rate in the United States. High with Chicago, high with some other cities in LA County. The highest sales tax rate in the country. That's something to be proud of. So I urge everyone that votes for this, to get one of those, you know, those phone number one signs? I get football games and it goes to number one. Because that's the way I feel about it. Okay. Here's some other sales tax, here's sales tax for other cities in California. Fakersville, eight point five. Hamford, seven point five. Buena Park, seven point seven five. San Diego, seven point seven five. San Francisco, eight point five. So Laverne, if this passes, ten point two five. Where does this stop? I have no idea. So I told you that there was no value to this. There is little value to this hike. There's no capital improvement. It's not creating new jobs. It's not doing anything of value to me. It's not doing anything of value to the community. Not like our fire department, okay? I trust the city manager to make sure that we did value from our fire department. The thing that bothers me about the fire department, how many firemen live in Laverne? Two. Two firemen live in Laverne. Okay? So where are those firemen? Where are they spending their money? Not in Laverne. That's not where they live. They're not spending property tax money. Okay? They're spending money where they live. So we're getting no benefit. Not only are we not getting their sales tax, but businesses are not getting their spendable income, which generates jobs, which generates capital improvements. Okay? All those things. Okay? Just, I said there's two firemen living in Laverne. How many women firefighters are there? Zero. Okay? Zero women. I didn't hear the fire chief mention anything about that. That's a lawsuit waiting to happen right there. Okay? You have to, you have to hire women firefighters. I don't think you have a choice. You have to stop everything else and be compliant with every community around here. Okay? So by spending money, if firemen spend money in Laverne, that's what you call a trickle-down economy. For those that, another one of my personal heroes, you call it Reaganomics. Trickle-down. Okay? Now let's talk about paramedics. The average paramedic in Laverne, salary, benefits, overtime, two hundred and four thousand dollars a year. Okay? That's two million dollars a year. Men are just being spent in Laverne, hardly any. Maybe lunches. That money is not generating anything for the city of Laverne. Okay? So I just can't figure out why anybody's for this. Claremont didn't approve it. So if you can go to Claremont and buy a car, you're going to save four hundred dollars than going to a city that's a fifty thousand dollar car. Then if you buy a car in some city that's going to pass this. And I don't, I talked to the city manager last year and I don't think, he was trying to convince me that there was a kickback to cities and I researched that and I don't think there is a kickback on sales tax if you buy a car in another city. I don't think there's a kickback with city income. But he can steer me right, but I've looked and looked on the internet. So I can't find any kickback. Okay? And the last thing on the city tax, I make sure that when you go to mobile hall parks and you talk to people on limited income, that you're telling them that they're going to lose probably seventy-five dollars a year because they're going to pay more sales tax. And they earn limited income. They can't afford that. All right? So that's all on the sales tax. That's really not the reason I'm here tonight. I'm here tonight because at the last city council meeting, for the last five minutes of the city council meeting, the mayor made a political stump speech. There was no doubt that it was a political speech. He had notes that he went through. So he was all pre-planned. Okay? Here's some things he said. He said he loved the fire in the police. He told us he was a submariner in Hawaii and he's a bartender for admirals and generals. Okay? He told us he was a bartender, Cass and Cleaver. He's a god of good degree in hospitality. He said one-third of the sales tax revenue comes from people outside of Laverne. He didn't mention, because they don't have car dealers, Costco, Glendora Marketplace, those big box stores, that Laverne spends more than one-third of their money in those cities. Okay? So it was a half-truth. Okay? He told us he's not shady or greedy. He told us that even though he fired his employees, he gave them nice severance pay. He told us, he told us it's okay to work out of his house because two guys named Nick and Carl do. I don't know who Nick and Carl are, but I guess he must know who they are. So then after, after he made this four-minute and fifty-five speech, he gavelled the meeting to a close with his opponent sitting three feet to his left. Okay? The city mayor code of conduct enacted in nineteen twenty, in two thousand and three. Mayors should never use a position to secure an unwarranted advantage for themselves. They should never use a position where personal statements might be reasonably expected to show partiality in their actions. Now, I'm not done with it, the mayor, but I'm mad at Robert's Rules of Order. Any parliamentary procedure, written or unwritten, requires that if somebody is making an inappropriate or improper speech while they're running for office, that Councilwoman Carter has to say, "Point of order, Mr. Mayor." Councilman Rosales has to say, "Point of order, Mr. Mayor." Mr. Davis, who's supposedly the smart man in the room, "Point of order, Mr. Davis. Point of order, Mr. Mayor." This is not a political forum. So I just, I was unconscionate about it. So I'm done.
Not a political, yeah. I don't think that gentleman's been here for the last two and a half years. I did want to correct Mr. Ivy. Unfortunately, he dropped the mic and left the building. But on that Nextdoor post that contacted him and said, you know, "Take it back to the ghetto", I did respond to that. I called the people that said it and the people that liked it racist, which was very much a racist comment. And I was blocked from Nextdoor for four days. How's that? So the people that make the comment, it's okay. The people that defend it, not so much. So. Anyway, I appreciate your time tonight. I'm going to try to make this a little bit sweeter than that last one, but I did want to bring a couple of things up because between our last council meeting and this one, most everybody have received this. So I wanted to address this tonight. Kind of like the same thing as this was when I received this, just a little bit different. So basically what it says is, here's my accomplishments. And basically wanted to point out the rest of the accomplishments that weren't included in that. And that's simply what it was. Simply the other side of the story is what we're trying to convey. So I formed this pack back in late December and early January, so I just wanted to help everybody understand that. We called it very specifically Transparent Laverne. We called it very specifically Transparent Laverne, Opposing Tim Heppert From Air. So that's what it was. This happens all the time, Tim, you know that. There's campaigns for an opponent, and there's campaigns against. This happens to be one that's against, but it's right in the name, so we're not hiding from anything, hence being transparent. I left Don Kendrick's campaign backing at that time because it's definitely a conflict of interest, no question about it. I'm here to tell you that tonight. And Don really wouldn't be happy if he knew I took about seven thousand dollars in donations for this opposing PAC that probably would have went to his campaign to support him, so, Don, I apologize for that. But it's something I felt I had to do. And the reason I felt that way, Tim, is because I sat here on November eighteenth, and you mentioned to me, you called me out by name from the days, and you said, specifically, you said, "I haven't been investigating, and if you want to do one, go ahead." And that's really what this was about. This was about showing people what's transpired over the last two and a half years. I think you're a great guy. I've heard all the things you've done in Laverne, helped Little League, given to different businesses. I don't think there's anything wrong with the person, I just don't like what you said. And so that's the comments that came in the brochure, and that's what I'll talk about tonight. I will try to get through these really quick because we've been through them. You know, I've heard a lot of comments that said, you know, this was a hit job, this was a smear campaign. But I've talked about this for the last two and a half years, right here in this space. I've addressed every single issue that was in this brochure. I just wanted to make sure that the residents, before they voted on March third, understood the same thing. And that's simply what it is. So I hope you take it for what it is. I'll point some of those out real quick, because you did, on November eighteenth, you also mentioned that I had private information between you and Bob Russey in a conversation. I can tell you right now, ad nauseam, all I've given out is public document. It's all there on facebook.com/transparentlaverne. It's all there, it's all recorded. I don't know that Bob's ever talked to me about any conversation he had with you, but I can assure you, everything that's in this is public record. So anybody in this room can get a copy of it, and you can get it again at that Facebook site. But you know, it's, it's not just listening to this Transparent Laverne group, because just like LV3C, we have our opinions. We understand exactly what we feel, we know who we're for, we know who we're against, we know what we like, we know what we don't like. That's what makes Laverne great. But so let me share with you some comments from others that felt the same way. And so that, as we put the spotlight on Jim Murphy, the rigor shows that this is a little bit wider than what is being portrayed. So I'll start with the comments of council and staff back on January twenty-second. In the city council meetings that Lupe had recorded, they went through this whole thing about closed session. So if you go back to it, Mr. Davis said that you had given that information out. Mr. Rosales, who's no longer, or is not here tonight, so I'm sorry, did not mean that. He is not here tonight, didn't follow the rules, and did admit to us that he had disclosed closed-session meeting information. Councilmember Carter did admit that he did disclose the information. Mayor said the same thing. City manager said that there was no investigation, I'm sorry, that was Bob Rus, or Mr. Kress said there was no investigation because you admitted it. So there are six people sitting up here that all said the same thing on closed session, and you're the only one saying that that didn't happen. So let me take it one step further, and this is probably the most damning thing, when somebody that, and I, I told you, I voted for you four years ago as a council member, and, and this is, this is the trust that I gave you, to share text messages back and forth with Dave Banano, who's the labor negotiator for the Laverne Firefighters Union, and also on their executive board. You, he says to you, he says, "I hope the closed meeting went better. We were all confused on the ten percent thing, what happened with that vote from closed session?" Your response is, "The ten percent's gone, and they're enforcing the memorandum of understanding." It's right here in a text message. That's divulging closed-session information, there's no, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. And I want to share this one because I don't think we paid much attention to this. We've talked a long time about Downey, Manhattan Beach, West Covina, and now Laverne being all caught up in this firefighter lawsuit, vote no confidence, same playbook, same lawyer, all this noise. And here's the message that came to you from the union. So Downey did end up paying almost ten million dollars. JPIA, who's our insurer, paid a large portion of that. I don't know how much Downey had to pay them after insurance kicked in. I believe I heard Laverne has one million coverage, and this is the part that hurts the most. And then the city is on the hook for the rest. And I don't know, but where I come from, that, that's just not right. I don't know if you have any access, Tim, to the JPIA and what they paid over at Downey. I mean, this is not a conversation that should take place between a council member, a sitting council member, and somebody from a labor negotiating employee union. Sorry. I got to speed this up, sorry. JPIA comments on your behavior.
Everybody will have a chance to speak. Everybody has a chance to speak tonight, so if you'll just please hold your comments, then your comments will be listened to when you're at the podium. Thank you.
That judge did it right the other night, can we sing the national anthem for some of that? So in the JPIA comments on the behavior, that further speak to the fact that the city's insurance is in jeopardy. Speak to the fact that these are things that are violation of both the coverage and the firefighters' bill of rights. Mr. Heppert's public commentary regarding Chief Jankowski may violate the highlighted sections above putting the city's coverage in jeopardy. Mr. Heppert's public calls for Chief Jankowski's termination should be conferred directly with a qualified labor employment council. I'll speed it up. Lastly, the comments about the claim. So in here, the claim, four different types of violations. Firefighters' bill of rights, but the municipal code in Laverne. You're here to be a lawmaker, not a law breaker. And so that's why we put this out. We just want everybody to understand, the other notes are here. I have the city manager's note to you. But let me just close with this, so that we can move on, and let other people get up here and make some more comments. The candidates forum, there was a theme that was out there the other night, on last Monday night, listening and transparency. Been listening for a long time, and now you've heard some of the comments of others around our city. For the past two and a half years, we've heard from LV3C, we've heard from the Firefighters Association. Very rarely did this message get out, only by a three, a couple people. I wish the city mob would have put this message out a long time ago. Would have been nice to hear the other side of this argument when it came to the lawsuit, when it came to the claim, and things of that nature. Would have really benefited the citizens to understand both sides of that, instead of shrouding it in secrecy under legal advice that, that hurt the city. It's been a one-sided narrative. We brought the other side to light by, by posting this out there. Whether or not you like it or not, that's what we did. You closed your remarks at the forum the other night by calling me out in a, in a police investigation. And I'm just wondering, is that really the best way to close a candidate for mayor, for mayor's speech? Is by calling out a resident saying he's under investigation for threatening firefighters? Pretty, pretty amazing. Anyway, I'll, I'll just ask you, lastly, to, to go to facebook.com/transparentlaverne, it's all there. All the documents are there for anybody to peruse. And I'd say, you be a judge, and on March third, you be the jury. Thank you for your time.
I no longer have any speaker cards, but I know there's people that like to speak.
Joyce Kelly. Good morning, good afternoon, good evening, Mayor and city council people. It's been a long day, and happy birthday, Tim. First of all, I know Ivey's not here, but I might not grow up in Compton, but I grew up in Dominguez, which was just right next door. Sorry. And so I grew up in those same areas, and went to the Buskin schools and did everything else. So I'm not a, you know, silver spoon girl that grew up in Laverne or in Orange County. I shop for my back-to-school clothes at the Goodwill. So what I've learned in life is my street smarts. To answer the question regarding the firefighters that don't live here, thus they're not spending the money here, our city manager makes over two hundred thousand a year, and he does not live in Laverne. I don't know how many kids in the quality of living in Laverne. So that shouldn't be a prerequisite for being a fireman in Laverne. And I happen to know some of the firemen, and I know some of them actually grew up in Laverne, but, you know, couldn't afford to buy a house here. So be realistic about that. Second area, I want to say that no one side, no one person here has said the school district is backing them. They have said individual people on the school board are backing them. And both candidates have said that. Neither one has said the school district is backing them. It's the individuals. So let's clear that up. So these are just, oh, by the way, Clermont, they didn't vote in the tax. They need money, so they may go county for the sheriffs or the fire, I mean, for the police department. However, they gave every city employee a bonus the month after the no-tax was voted in. I've also done my homework, which I have always done when I came to this room. So here is my original statement, the others I've added on since being here tonight. I have not attended a city council meeting since March of two thousand and nineteen, when Councilman Rosales was allowed to say derogatory remarks to me from the dais when myself and other people in the audience had made some comments. And nobody stopped him. So I chose not to come back to a city council meeting until tonight because I was not going to make myself vulnerable. And forgive me, Jim Murphy, but when that gentleman that talked about all of the things that he did, and he walked away from this dais, you made nasty comments about him, just like someone else in the audience did to me the, the, the city council meeting just before Councilman Rosales told me off. So what does that tell me? If we don't agree with what you say, you have the right, as residents or as council, to read us the riot act? We are Laverne. I have said, since I started coming to these meetings in two thousand and eighteen specifically, but I started coming to these meetings back in two thousand and fifteen. Like most residents, I didn't involve myself in the politics of the city until it affected me. In two thousand and fifteen, there was a meeting regarding the potential sale of Marshall Canyon Golf Course to the Lewis Company. The city council room was full of Laverne residents who did not want more homes built in that area. By the way, I'm not sure if you guys know that, have, I mean, it's been quite a few years now, but I was doing some research on this. Did you guys know that Lewis Company, who wanted to build the homes up there and wanted to swap and have Sierra Laverne be the public golf course, that at least this is what is according to the statements that were put out, Lewis Company was a partial owner of Sierra Laverne Golf Course? I don't know in what investment state, but that was in the newspaper, just for your information. The city council room was full of Laverne residents who didn't want to build the homes in the area. During this meeting, the mayor didn't take a stand. Tim Heppert did, and called for a vote. You know, the next week, I want to say, and I think that there was another woman on city council that actually called us out as being a, what was that? A lynch mob, because we didn't want homes built up there. This is the way we as residents who are speaking our mind are being treated. I voted for Tim in two thousand and seventeen, and I didn't even know the man. As I realized I wanted change, I wanted a mayor that actually listened to my concerns and those of the residents. Tim lost by seven votes. I spoke up at both city council, planning commission, and cap, planning commission meetings on the wilderness area off of Golden Hills in Monterey. Another time I got involved. Contrary to statements made about me from people in this room that said, "I'm a proponent of a biking trail, further biking trail on this property," and then I became rude and unruly, fighting for a biking trail there. Not what I fought for. And you could ask Wendy Lau. I asked planning commission if we had met the requirements of the space that's back there according to the grant, and we had. I don't want a biking trail back there, nobody does. Not true. Bikers do, residents don't. I spoke against the further access. On that same note, since I've been misquoted many times, I never said I owned my own business. I said I owned my own business. Over the period of time, when I came up here and spoke with city council, I gave you examples of what I've been through. And I spoke about owning my own business previously because I have forty employees, and I know what it's like to take care of your employees, thus the firemen. And we need to pay attention to employees. I said I owned my own business before, and I have forty employees. Thus I know that employees are your biggest asset, and, and yes, I did say that if I had run my business like the city did, it would not have survived. By the way, I did sell that business years ago for a profit. I stayed out of things. September two thousand and eighteen, when there was the big city council meeting over in the community center, there were two votes, there were votes made, or whatever you guys call these, what are they called?
Resolutions.
Resolutions, forgive me. Resolutions, just our two new committees. Two people on each committee leaving Tim out of the process until the vote came up, which meant he no knew, and he knew no information was going on, and there was a litigation one, and I forget the other one. The same thing with those that are on the litigation committee and those that are on the other don't have the assignment, behind-the-scenes information. They only get to vote, and that's what they did with Tim with everything. I understood this was based on something that Tim did or didn't discuss without a closed session. In early two thousand and nineteen, the firefighters' lawsuits relating to retaliation were settled. Why are there still two committees that keep Tim out of discussions? As, this is apparent punishment for him because it had to do with the firefighters. You guys have sat here, Jim Murphy sat here and said it was something Tim did, and it was about the firefighters. That is behind us. Why is Tim not part of what's going on? Instead, you continue to exclude him from everything, effectively dismissing the residents of Laverne that voted to have him as part of the process, along with the three other council members and the mayor. In two thousand and nineteen, city council was asked again to rescind these committees. They voted once again, four to one, to keep them in place. Why? It's onerous to have these two separate committees continue. You are censoring Tim. Next, I want to know, how did the PAC that started, was started by Jim Murphy and others, gain access to the February second email between Tim and Bob Russey regarding FML leave? Maybe it was public information, I'm not going to say it's not. But it was in that flyer that they have that says that Tim was violating HIPAA laws. The same thing was said in the letter from John Koffte's attorney to the city that, that Tim had violated HIPAA laws because he asked for medical records. Pull up from Transparent Laverne, pull up that email and print it out. All that was asked was, did we have doctor certification for his leave? I understand there were questions asked because he was only asking about one person. And anybody that's ever been in HR, which I have been for forty years, knows that having doctor certification for FML is a requirement. So how did the PAC get that? The JPIA letter that was dated October twenty-ninth, that Mr. Murphy also spoke about, was sent to the city manager and marked as confidential. However, it also waited, made its way to the hands of the outside of city government, to the hands of PAC. How did that happen? That letter, if, again, you pull it up and read it, is not in full because the signature pages are not there, anything else. But the key words, and Murphy read them when he was standing up here, that, the things that Tim, the, the comments that Tim made were potentially in violation, not in violation, but they want you to believe it's in violation. It was potentially in violation. The insurance company paid the retaliation claim, and it was a retaliation claim. We still have coverage, contrary to what others have said would happen. That claim was paid out in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, it was made in two thousand and eighteen. Anywhere along the way, they could have canceled the coverage. They could have denied paying that claim. They had the right to if there was a legal cause to deny that claim. Insurance companies look for a loophole all the time. Not sure how many residents live in northern Laverne, but for the last three years on Nextdoor Laverne, people have said, "Oh my God, my insurance company dropped me because they said we're in a fire zone." We haven't had a fire, that individual hadn't had a fire, hadn't had a claim, yet. The insurance company had the ability to drop their insurance. That didn't happen to us. The insurance company paid. They didn't have a justifiable reason not to, and trust me, had they had a reason not to, insurance companies do that all the time. I'm not sure how many of you know what insurance bad faith is? That's when an insurance company won't pay. That's when an insurance company won't pay. Okay, so what is the pattern here? Taking a grain of salt and making it a shaker of salt to satisfy a grudge. When you make up or embellish facts to hurt people and fulfill your own agenda, it is your morals and ethics that are called into question. What was done to Matt Lyons when he ran for city council, and someone going to his employer shows that this behavior isn't a one-time occurrence for some in this city. Talking to employers, places of worship, neighbors, and volunteer organizations about city residents, when they speak their voice, run for office, or just participate as a resident in this city, is tantamount to slander when it is based on false information. I have been accused of being mean, rude, and disrespectful. However, I have always been prepared with facts when speaking at city council or planning commission meetings. I have not made up stories to fulfill my own agenda as others do. The city needs change, transparency, and accountability. And for those Christians sitting on the dais, shame on you.
If we could please speed it up a little bit, we'd appreciate it.
I won't be too long. Good evening, Mayor and city council. So to answer something to what was just last spoken, all the documents that we have as part of our group on Transparent Laverne are public record, and they have been obtained through the proper channels. Just so, we want to make that clear with everybody, we don't have some secret insider information. So, Captain Felusick, 52-year resident. I am part of a group called Transparent Laverne. We're being accused of running a smear campaign against Councilmember Heffern. We're not. I got involved because I witnessed actions made by this council member that I feel are damaging to our city. I have spoken to these concerns a few times at council meetings. The last time I spoke about it was November 18th, 2019, where Councilmember Heffern's response was, "Have the facts", he called me out by name. The info that we have sent out to Laverne voters is the facts, and therefore, it's not a smear campaign. I have a few questions that I put out on Nextdoor. I'm going to ask them here tonight, I know nobody can respond. Hopefully, it'll give a little food for thought to people. It's been said that Councilmember Heffern found out about the expired breathing apparatus bottles at a Firefighters Association meeting when the union was considering candidates to support for the election. I would like to know, what was the date of this meeting? And if all these union members were aware of the expired bottles, why would they tell a council member slash mayor or candidate, instead of telling the chief? I never read anywhere where the chief was told and refused to make the repairs. I saw emails where it was recommended, but not presented to him as a life and death issue. So I also want to know, do you think that once the firefighters' union hired a law firm that has made lots of money suing cities on behalf of firefighters' unions, that there was any possibility of coming to terms and just sitting down and working things out together? Next question, do you think that publicly declaring that the fire chief should be fired was beneficial to the defense of our city in the firefighters' union's lawsuit against the city of Laverne? And then my last question is, do you think that it's appropriate for a councilperson to be texting info to a union member shortly after leaving closed-session meetings, where discussions of our city's defense were taking place, when the union member was part of the group that was suing our city? So I've drawn my conclusions to these questions. I want to give other citizens something to think about. And if anyone has answers that they would like to give me, I would love to hear that. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Wendy Lau, 13-year resident of the city. I live at 1765 Lordsburg Court. And I just wanted to take a moment tonight to try to bring this back to a positive place. And I hope that I can be the last comment, or at least a positive one, where we can try to leave tonight in a good place. Because I think we started in a very good place. I think that we have so many things in this city to be proud of. You know, I think we started tonight honoring a 14-year-old girl coming to the city who's doing amazing things, she's a product of our community. We honored someone who has been here for a number of years, doing beautiful things for our community. And that's because of where we live, and who we live with, and how we comport ourselves. And so I said this the other night at the candidate's forum, and I'll say it again tonight for all of you here again, that we cannot go back. We cannot change things that have happened. All we can do is decide who we will be today, and how will we behave today. And so I ask for you, for those of you sitting up at the dais, to be those examples. And to say, "We're not going to engage in this back and forth." And I would like for everybody in the room to take that to heart as well, because I know that many people have said that, but don't look themselves in the mirror and say that it applies to me too. And it does apply to me too, right? So I'm not going to get up here and say something that I'm not willing to stand behind on my own. We are all fallible people, we're humans. So how do we move forward? I would like to end with this comment, and remember all the beautiful things that are part of this city, and how long some of us have been friends and lived next to each other, or have gotten to know each other. I've met people in the last couple of weeks that I appreciate and like being able to call my friend. And so I'd like to move forward in that vein. So if we can conclude tonight with that, and let everybody have the rest of their Tuesday night to watch Netflix, to have a glass of wine if they so choose, or to go to sleep, that would be great. Because I think this is what we need to move forward. And so let's all try to take a deep breath together, so feel just, bear with me, humor me. Just one deep breath, everybody. Let it out, okay? So if we can please, just remember all the good that's here and all the good that can be. I think that's a beautiful thing. So thank you, everybody, for being here. Like I said before, it warms my heart that people do care and are engaged. Let's try to continue to do that positively. Thank you.
Mark?
Mark, as here is the president of the Little Police Officers Association, Mr. Mayor, council, city staff. I wasn't going to talk tonight, I'm tired. It's where the home stretch of this campaign, and we're working hard to push. Obviously, you guys hear me talk about the tax measure a lot. I'm tired, I wasn't going to talk tonight, but thank you, Bruce, for giving me a little bit of energy tonight. So, you know, I appreciate the energy, and I appreciate people's concerns with the tax increase, and I get it. What I ask you folks to do, who are opposed to this, Bruce, you brought up a number of cities and the amount of taxes that those folks pay. And if this increase happens, we'll be one of the highest cities. I encourage you folks to do your homework, and look at how much money comes back to your city in that taxes you pay. That's sales tax. Look at the amount of money that comes back to your city in the current sales tax you pay. This sales tax that we're proposing was created by the city, for the city. If this tax measure passes, 100% of every penny earned in that tax measure will stay in the city that all of us live in. It will stay here. It won't go to LA County, it won't go to Measure M, Measure H, Measure R. It may, you know, who knows, there may be a measure that comes out later to help of some rare platypus, I don't, I don't know. This money will stay here for you people, for all of us who live here and care about this city. It's not the cure to our situation. If we didn't need it, we wouldn't be asking for it. If this passes, over $3 million will come to this city that it hasn't seen. And that, over that, $3 million will stay here forever, forever. We too have a problem with hiring. It's very competitive right now, trying to bring in qualified candidates. People are going where the money's at. We are not the highest-paid police department. But we are a good police department, and we take pride in who we attract. Passing a tax measure like this will help us attract good people. Think about what you're doing for your city. This tax measure is huge. If this does not pass, there will be, this is, it's, someone brought up Clermont earlier. So Clermont didn't pass it, right? So the city council unanimously votes to start a city survey, to contract with the sheriffs, to see what it would cost, because they realize they can't afford their police department, they currently can't afford it. The very next council meeting, all of the citizens are up in arms, saying, "What are you doing? We can't go, county sheriff." Well, you can't have your cake and eat it too. The money needs to come from somewhere, and we're not making it. So please, consider that when you vote. Vote yes on Measure LV. Thank you.
I will be brief. I'm Jolette, I live in But Hill Terrace Mobile Home Park. I recently had the pleasure of walking another mobile home park with a firefighter, his wife, and their two children. And we were walking on behalf of our candidate, trying to answer questions, hand out information. I was appalled, these are all senior parks, and some of the elderly people were scared to death, because someone had already been there and told them that if Mr. Heffern was elected, that he was going to make sure that the mobile home parks closed. Now, we know that is not true, and I just want you to know, that's what's been going on.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Linda Wilkinson, 31-year resident and owner of five properties in Laverne. I'm the creator and original owner of Chases Restaurant, and the property owner of the original location on Third Street. I'm here this evening to speak about my lawsuit against Mayor Kendrick and the city of Laverne. I was forced to sue after the city offered to pay my tenants, Chris Gendrow and Susan Wickman, up to $79,000 of taxpayer money to break their lease with me almost two years early and move Chases into its new location directly across the street from Mayor Kendrick's real estate office. The city intentionally and wrongfully interfered in my contract with my tenants, and didn't care about the consequences to me. And Mayor Kendrick was prohibited from voting under the Brown Act, because his business is right across the street, but he did it anyway. The city didn't care about the consequences to me. The main consequence was that when Chris and Susan abandoned the property, the property went for more than 90 days without a restaurant in it. I lost my health department certification. That's made it incredibly difficult to find a new tenant. And when I had, when I did, I had to rent the property at a steep discount with severe limits on its use. I've lost hundreds of thousands of dollars because the city decided to spend our tax dollars to insert itself between a landlord and a tenant. Jury trial is set for this November 17th. The case is still in discovery, and we've deposed Mayor Kendrick, city manager Russey, council member Davis. We have motions to compel pending before the court, because Mayor Kendrick and the city refused to produce information about Mayor Kendrick's finances, any information about the basis for the city's multiple public statements that Mayor Kendrick was advised by city attorney Bob Press that he didn't have a conflict, and any information about the council's discussions about the Chases deal in closed session. Discussions that should not have taken place, because they weren't agendized. As you know, and we've heard you say many times, closed sessions are limited to the issues stated on the agenda, and discussions of other matters are a Brown Act violation. Before I filed suit, I served the city with a claim for damages to give the city a chance to take reasonable steps to remedy the harm they caused me. Instead, they ignored my claim, and then, when I sued, they ditched their longtime legal counsel and hired an expensive downtown Los Angeles firm to take over. Here's what happened. September of 2017, city manager Russey, with the assistance of council member Muir Davis, who happens to be related by marriage to the owners of Chases, proposed lending my then-tenants Christopher Gendrow and Susan Wickman up to $79,000 of our public money to move Chases to a new location on Benita. The Benita location is across the street from Mayor Kendrick's business, and he should have recused himself from voting because of a conflict of interest, as we've all heard him do many times before, but not this time. Why did the city hand out taxpayer dollars to Chases, a limited liability company, to pay rent on the Third Street property, which was the personal obligation of Christopher Gendrow and Susan Wickman? There was no financial vetting, no application, no bank statements, et cetera. Bob Russey met with Chris and asked, "What's it going to take to get you to move?" Chris said he didn't want to pay double rent, and presto, the city handed him over $50,000. Why would the city give out a handout like that? Chris and Susan don't even live in Laverne. Then, Bob Russey asked Muir Davis to help him write the contract. Why? Muir Davis testified, he's never worked on a contract for the city before or since. He's a council member, not a clerk or an attorney. Is it just a coincidence that the contract was for Chris Gendrow, his family member by marriage? And is it a coincidence that Chris is now giving thousands of dollars to Don Kendrick's reelection campaign? The city made this backdoor deal behind my back without any communication with me, not caring that it would have a significant economic detriment to my property. No one consulted me or invited me into the negotiations. None of the council members ever talked to me, except for Councilmember Heffern. Bob Russey, Muir Davis, Robin Carter, Charlie Rosales, and Don Kendrick never talked to me. I'm a longtime Laverne resident and business owner, and they destroyed my business without so much as a phone call. My property has been severely harmed, because once the restaurant is closed for 90 days, the health department permit is revoked, all grandfather rights are lost, and to reopen as a restaurant, the premises must be brought up to the current code. After Susan and Chris abandoned it, it did not meet the threshold of being a restaurant, and I lost the permit. Had the city required Chris and Susan to continue to operate as a restaurant with even minimal hours of operation during the remainder of the almost two-year lease, the health department permit would not have been revoked, and I could have found new lessees with a simple name change on the permit. Instead, I had to try to find a tenant willing to rent the property without the permit. During Muir Davis's deposition under oath, he was asked if, quote, "He ever considered the consequences for Ms. Wilkinson's health department certification." Councilmember Davis's response was, "I was told there were going to be no risks on that." Attorney Mason asked, "Who told you that?" Response from council member Muir Davis, Eric Shear. Eric Shear is the head of the Community Development Department. I ask you now, how could you not do basic research on such a simple issue before paying my tenant to move after?
Mayor, let's keep the time same for all speakers.
If the city just made a mistake, excuse me, if the city just made a mistake, they should own up to it and make it right. When the new tenants at my Third Street property applied for a health department permit, in order to keep the existing heat-producing kitchen equipment, the current codes applied and required a grease trap, hood, and other expensive property changes easily over. and required a grease trap, hood, and other expensive property changes easily over $100,000. The new tenant did not have such funds and is operating right now without the ability to even cook a hamburger patty or bake a cookie. We tried to take Councilmember Carter's deposition, but had to stop almost immediately because she hadn't brought any of the required documents and admitted she hadn't made attempt to look for them. Then, when we tried to show her documents, she couldn't read them because she forgot her glasses. That's the level of respect she showed me and the judicial process. She said... She did say that she never checked all of the emails sent to her City of Laverne email address because Bill Eftman in IT screens all emails to council members and decides if the recipients will receive them or not. So if you send an email to Councilmember Carter, she may or may not ever see it, and apparently prefers it that way. In fact, we learned in the deposition that all citizens' emails to council members are first routed to City Manager Russi's office, and he and his employees decide when the council members get to... What the council members get to see. Sometimes, Russi intercepts citizens' emails to council members and answers them before the council member even knows the email was sent. During City Manager Russi's deposition, he was asked, "Mr. Russi, was it a concern of yours, as you contemplated preparing the Economic Assistance Agreement with Chases, that Mr. Gendrow's abandonment of the property could cause economic harm to Ms. Wilkinson?" His response, "To the understanding that the lease would continue to ensure she would be enjoying the rent through the end of the lease, I felt that we were addressing that concern." Following question, "But she didn't give any specific thought to collateral consequences such as the loss of her health department certification?" Answer, no. Bob Russi just didn't care. Russi said in his deposition that he prepared the Chases deal with Gendrow, quote, "Based on general direction that I was given in closed session."
Leslie, can you speed it up, please?
Yes, I'm almost done.
Thank you.
But how could that be? That Chases agreement was never listed in any agenda on... As a closed session topic. This council, under the control of Bob Russi and Don Kendrick, flots the Brown Act rules on closed sessions, just as Don Kendrick flots the rules on conflict of interest. Don Kendrick was obligated to recuse himself and abstain from voting on the line of credit to Chases to move across the street from his office. Don Kendrick had recused himself at least 20 times in the few years prior to the Chases Economic Assistance Agreement vote, and many times since then for exactly that reason. Question to Don Kendrick, "So, there were many occasions prior to the Chases... Excuse me. The Economic Assistance Agreement for Chases in October of 2017, when you recused yourself based on the location of your business, correct?" Yes. When placed under oath, everyone points the finger at someone else. Whose idea was this? Who drafted it? Who decided not to bother to even tell me, let alone ask my opinion? City Manager Russi's emails show that he drafted it together with Muir Davis, who edited it. Russi says he was acting at the direction of the city council. Mayor Kendrick, City Manager Russi, and Councilmember Davis cannot explain why it was okay for the mayor to vote on approval of the Chases agreement with his real estate office across the street over 20 times in the years prior. Mayor Kendrick declared a conflict of interest for various reasons. I'm just going to go ahead and skip to the end. Chases more than doubled their sales at the new location, but, as Chris Gendrow has stated, he will never pay back a penny because of the terms of the deal. It was a great deal for him, and now he's paying back Don Kendrick. The dollars he has saved from our city is now spending on political propaganda, although he doesn't live in Laverne. Last month, Christopher Gendrow was one of three contributors to the Pro-Kendrick Political Action Committee that put out disgusting smear campaign against Tim Hepburn. Mr. Gendrow donated $3,570.
Oh, he did.
Jim and Rose Murphy donated $3,852. And Councilmember Robin Carter's husband donated $2,500. The Political Action Committee is Transparent Laverne PAC opposing Tim Hepburn for mayor. This PAC paid to have a flyer sent to our homes and was left on most windshields during the candidates forum last week. The flyer was best described by one of our residents as "vile, slanderous, and hateful", and was funded for the benefit of Mayor Don Kendrick. Quick perquo, the city lends money that the borrower will never pay back because of tax credits. The mayor fails to recuse himself from voting, although his real estate office is across the street. Seven months after Chases received its final payment of $4,300 from the city, the owner of Chases makes a significant financial contribution to oppose the candidate running against Mayor Don Kendrick. Sure looks like, quick perquo, or by Webster's definition, favor or advantage from or expected in return for something. This is ugly political corruption. It's wrong. I look forward to putting on my case in front of a jury. Thank you for allowing me this time and for your attention. Be nice.
16 minutes. I get all 16 minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Just like a keyboard.
Okay, let's...
That's enough? I can't end it on that?
No, we're not going to end it on that. But let's... I would like to keep people speaking at least no more than five minutes, please.
I'm not going to follow that.
Hang on. There's things that were stated in the argument of the lawsuit, so there's not anything that can be said on that. But I would like to point that we do have information about the Chases loan and all the circumstances behind it on Know the Facts. So if anybody would like to go check the information right there, all the documentation is available on some of the things that were put in.
Did everybody hear that?
No.
No.
On Know the Facts, on the city's website, is this subject because it's been something that has been circling about for several years, and a lot of the statements that were made can be accurate or accurately reflected on what occurred in the timeline. So it's on Know the Facts on the city's website for people who are interested in voting on this lawsuit.
Linda Wilkinson is wrong on about 95% of what she just said, and it's verifiable. I am not a resident of Laverne. I only own a business here that employs 57 employees and is a top 25 sales tax revenue generator. I have a voice in this city because the sales tax that I generate helps pay for public service. Yes, I am a member of Transparent Laverne because in the last three and a half years, I've been at more city council meetings than you have, Mr. Hepburn. You've missed four. I've missed three. Because of vacations, that's legitimate, but I've watched every facial expression and every comment has been made on your behalf and by you. And I was approached to say, "Is there anything we can do to get the information out?" I'm not a Don Kendrick lover as much as I want the facts to come out about a man who makes decisions poorly by following people like that. She has sued the city three or four times now. Raise your hand in this room if you've ever been in a lawsuit. She is lawsuit happy. That alone stands for her inability to ever have a job, and furthermore, she wants to be a lawyer, so she talks in legalese, but she could never pass the bar. Linda dropped the case she had against us, not settled. It was dropped with prejudice four days before the lawsuit because she had no case. Mark my words right here, by November, the case will be dropped against the city or settled for no money because it has no merit. The city of Laverne and many other cities support businesses in their town. The most important controllable thing a city can do is bring business to town that generates sales tax. The property tax is almost awash. The industrial side of the tax is a little bit of a gain, and the big thing is sales tax, and you want good businesses here. After two years of negotiation, because I know what kind of a person she is, I was told in an email several times, "Negotiations have ended," and I had to look elsewhere. We met with the city of San Dimas. We had calls into the city of Upland. I was offered the Caskin-Cleaver Building on the 57. I was then told... I was told at a downtown business district meeting that I was needing to leave, and like a good city manager did, it got back to him, and he called me and said, "Hey, before you do anything, let me know if I can help you out." That's what cities do. And if you're not for that, Mr. Hepburn, you shouldn't be mayor because I was a good business, and I had... You had even at my place several times and told me what a great job it was. And suddenly, because of a friendship you've had in the past, you turncoat? Really? And then you allow your wife to put a GIF on about the fire department that showed that Chases took $50,000 from the firemen? Are you kidding me? That's why you're not going to get my vote, or the 24 employees that I have that work at Chases who are not going to vote for you either. I would ask you not to have a guerrilla campaign in front of the restaurants in the top 25 in the city and have your fans out there, of which is Dave Bonanno, the guy that you're communicating with, the negotiator on the, you know, the union, standing out in front of my restaurant on President's Day yelling, "Down with Kendrick!" And you know what he said to me, and it's recorded on videotape? I went out there and asked him nicely to leave. And then, after he didn't leave nicely, I said very plainly, "You guys don't understand what's going on. This is nothing to do with the firefighters and Chases. I love the firefighters. I'm pro firefighter. I'm pro Laverne firefighter. But they boycotted Chases because of you, Mr. Hepburn, because of your wife, and they followed through diligently. That's right, and I have proof of that." Now, here's the other thing that bugs me about it. This guy that was standing next to Bonanno, I wish you knew his name. You know what he said to me to him? He said, "How do you not support Laverne Fire? You look like you're about to have a heart attack. They're not going to respond to you." That's what he said. That's the kind of discourse you've created in this city? Yeah, that's right. You have.
Show your video.
Allow... Show the video. That's right. I have it. And by the way, this woman... This woman here alone, to allow her to have public forum and go to her house on a Christmas party when she's suing the city that you represent is a little bit beyond the pale, to say the least. The business was sold to Susan, Jeff, and Chris, Chases LLC. She had no connection to it. We were renting from her building. Fact is, and I'm going to bring this up, and I'm going to carry this over, the health department told me many different times, "All she needs is a hood. Put a hood in, and she can do the same thing there. She's too cheap, and she doesn't want to put a hood in." Now, Chris, who owns the restaurant now, or owns Tabernacle there, says, "I want to put a hood in, Chris. She won't let me." And then she has the audacity to stand in front of this group and let this CCC group say to them, "Oh, Linda's the greatest person on the planet," when they don't know the facts. By the way, the city of Monrovia lent Metro Nissan $950,000 on an exact 10-year pay pack with increased sales tax revenue. It's happened in Claremont 50 times. Oh, by the way, it's happened in Laverne 84 times in the last 15 years, and we keep allowing this woman to convince you guys that that's a bad thing. It's a good thing. It's a good thing that cities look for good people who work hard. And by the way, trust me, there is no one else who works harder than I do in trying to make that business go. And yet, all I get is crap from the firefighters in this van. And not supporting Chases is a big, huge mistake. And I think, and I believe it wholeheartedly, my wife can't come to these meetings, and we can no longer run Chases and we're selling Chases to our employees because of the stress that's been caused by this city and this actions and that woman. And you have responsibility in that too, Mr. Hepburn. Yeah, boo all you want. Here's the other last thing, and I'll cut off the 16 minutes. At Benita High School Gymnasium, you were asked very pointedly, "Do you believe in term limits?" And without hesitation, you said absolutely I believe in term limits. Not now, because I don't want to violate the Brown Act, but when it's your time to talk when this is over, I'd like you to answer this question. If the fair citizens of this city decide to elect you on March 3rd, you will then have been on council five years and a mayor for two more years. That's seven years. That's a term limit. Will you say publicly you will not run again after the two years because you believe in term limits? Because Mr. Kendrick answered the question saying, "I believe term limits are by the people's vote. When we do, I decide to run, and you want to keep the city the way it is, you vote for that." So please answer us tonight like you didn't answer me last time. And if there's anyone, please, please misunderstand me. I'll give you Hugh Kelly my driver's license number, my social security number, because I'm a big Second Amendment guy myself. And I've had people driving by my house recently in weird cars in my neighborhood. I'm thinking, "How did that happen?" "Oh, because Mr. Kelly and CCC decided to print my address for all to see." That's fine. I don't mind if you know all my address. I wasn't hiding behind a company or an organization that's called Transparent Laverne. So Linda, you didn't expose anyone tonight by your little fallacy, and the reality of Linda Wilkinson is she's been a wreck for this community and created this problem that we have on the city council right now. Linda Wilkinson is the problem here. Thank you.
We're going to take a quick recess. There's a couple things we need to do, so we'll get back in five, two, six minutes.
I just asked Wally how do I take my name out? I'm kidding, Richard.
I'd like to call a meeting back to order and turn it over to Robin Carter for a few comments.
I would just like to say something before we go any further with public comment. What Wendy had to say is so true. Let's not do this, that tearing down of each other's... All of us have faults, and all of us love Laverne. I know that. That's why we're all here. Let's not do this. I see a reporter right here up front, only meeting he's been to in a long time, and I've got to tell you, when I was first elected in 2009, I only beat Charlie Rosales by 57 votes. And he was here when they did the final count. And Charlie came over, gave me a big hug, and he wrote in the paper at that time, "Wow, you know, only in Laverne would, you know, this happen, that people would congratulate, that somebody else would may lose." And that's what Laverne's about. Let's, let's keep that in mind. And, and I'm, open comments, though. Lynn, you could come on up. I'm just saying, let's try to keep it to three minutes so we can get going. It's nine o'clock now. And if somebody said something you already did, but please remember how you feel about Laverne, the people we have to work with once after this is done, and care about one another, and move on. Thank you.
Well, I love Laverne. I agree with Wendy said, but I cannot agree with Councilwoman Carter because of her husband's donation to Transparent Laverne. But I know there's a lot of questions tonight for the firefighters. And I would like to announce that you can have coffee with the firefighters this Thursday and Friday from nine to eleven AM in South Bakery. And the only thing required is proper behavior, please. Over a month ago, Anna, who seems to be doing her job as our resident keeper, over a month ago, Anna made a very good suggestion to leak campaign politics out of the council chambers. I kept that promise by speaking to you, Mayor Kendrick, at the last council meeting, one-on-one, away from the microphone. I did the right thing by having a private discussion with you. I told you of my concern for the mobile home community residents regarding the real fear and anxiety they have upon them. They are being told Councilman Hepburn wants to get rid of rent control and change the zoning of the parks. This is not a rumor I heard. These are actual residents telling me their fears. This is undue stress put about seniors of our community, and this is wrong, and the truth must be conveyed. I came to Mayor Kendrick with a solution. All three candidates should visit the mobile home communities together to clear this fallacy. But there was no response. My other topical conversation I had with the Mayor Kendrick, away from the microphone, was over the fact that vandalism in an attempt to win an election is a blemish on our community. Certainly, we do not want our children to regard this as a tactic for winning. Councilman Hepburn and his campaign treasurer, on separate occasions, had permission by the manager of the dairy on White Avenue to install a large sign. On January fourth, the sign was installed. And that very day, the manager received threatening phone calls that there would be financial repercussions to having Councilman Hepburn sign up. By the next morning, the sign had been torn from the frame and nowhere in sight. Being told of the missing sign and being the man of character he is, Councilman Hepburn immediately went to the dairy and was apologetic to the manager for this threatening experience to the business. Mr. Kendrick, you told me Councilman Hepburn did not have permission to install the sign, and I informed you that is not true. And I invited you to meet me at the dairy so we can clean up this issue. On three different occasions, I personally spoke to the manager of the dairy. He told me the same exact sequence of events. He gave permission for the sign, he did himself. The threats came, the sign was stolen. One of my conversations with the dairy managers was after the installation of your sign, Mr. Kendrick. I inquired if any threats had occurred since your sign was installed, to which the manager's answer was no. Only threats when Councilman Hepburn's sign is up, not yours. I want to make this perfectly clear. I am not blaming Mayor Kendrick for personally ordering or being involved in this incident. But what I will say, if this had happened to my opponent, I would be too ashamed to install my sign after a threat to a business owner and such a malicious act had occurred. After that conversation and not seeing any concern for the issues I discussed, our entire community, our children, every household, have witnessed an all-time low. Therefore, instead of speaking one-on-one, this affects all of Laverne, so I am now speaking from the microphone. Mayor Kendrick, at the candidate forum last week, you spoke highly of your open-door policy at your real estate office. Residents are welcome to stop in anytime to talk with you. My personal experience was different. At the time, the county was in exclusive negotiations with Lewis Homes to swap Marshall Canyon Golf Course with Sierra Laverne Golf Course. I came to your office. I asked your secretary, "Does the mayor take city business questions at his workplace?" She asked my name and said she would inquire with you. She went upstairs, she came back down with a note, "You do not discuss city business with residents at your workplace." Mayor Kendrick, you asked Councilman Hepburn in your opening statement at the forum to apologize to the residents of Laverne. Is he to apologize for helping us save Marshall Canyon Golf Course? Is he to apologize for getting sprouts instead of Walmart? Is he to apologize for effectively assisting residents ultimately not widening of White Avenue? Is he to apologize for the safety and morale of our firefighters? Is he to apologize for the remodeling of the snack bar at Benita High School? Apologize for supplying and installing twenty-five thousand feet of conduit for the new turf at Benita High School? Is he to apologize for supplying the labor and material for the electrical installation of the Habitat for Humanity Home? Should he apologize for all five school board members individually endorsing him? We had two outstanding forums last week. And I would like to thank LD3C for their professional event and Benita Unified School District for offering the facility. I would like to personally thank our city clerk, Lupi, for her professional attention and effort, along with all the volunteers. Lupi is a good communicator, and she always does it with a smile. She provided clear information to each candidate as to how the event would transpire. She informed all candidates of the regulations regarding campaign materials. The letter stated, "No campaign literature is permitted outside the building." Yet this vulgar display of character assassination was placed on every car. How could you do this to your own city employee? We all know why it's a PAC and not authorized by a candidate. We've already heard from the mayor, "I have had nothing to do with this group," and referring to this flood. But residents know who the donors are. In this room, we have a few, Councilwoman Carter's husband and Chris Genrow, the owner of Chases. All I ask is that you remember your friends are a reflection of you. Thank you.
There's been, uh-
Your name, please.
Rick McGurn. There's been a number of different people that have spoken at length on a lot of different topics tonight. So this isn't intended at any one of them or any one topic. I've been to quite a few council meetings. This is by far the ugliest that it's ever been. I don't know what you can do about the topics that people can get up here and talk about. Maybe nothing. But it would seem that the least you could do, you, you said, "Please limit to five minutes." You said, "Please limit to three minutes." That doesn't work. It has to be, this is the way it's going to be. Here's the rules. You get five minutes. At the end of five minutes, you sit down. I think it's time. You guys need to do something to cut this stuff short. Thank you.
Thank you. I like that. I'll keep it there. Hopefully, I like to change the-
Your name, please.
Sorry, Annie Williams.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'd like to talk about some trees. On, I live on Ramona, and the trees are on Nokia Avenue. And they've been unkept. They're not, they haven't been trimmed for a long time. And so, long story short, we're new. We have a new yard. Armstrong designed it. I knew those trees would not allow my garden to grow. So I asked permission from the city to trim our two trees. I got that. Then the other neighbors were saying, "Wow, how did you do that?" You know, "We, we, these have been unkept for so long, and they're messy. They ruin my new driveway," and just a bunch of stuff. Long story short, a very kind gentleman, okay, we made that. But, um, told me I needed, I made a call and said, "What can we do about the trees?" I was given a long story. I could feel like I was just being pushed aside. And so then I started petition, and I needed forty signatures. It was a red flag to me, because I'm thinking, "My voice, I get no answers. I get pushed aside." I'm told one person's going to call me, then another person calls me, and I said, "Wait, I'm waiting for this guy." Well, he told me he's too busy, and he had me call you. So my, "But?" Not a red, not a red flag. Got the petition, done forty, forty signatures, because I said, "Okay." I said, "You don't know who you're talking to. You want forty, you want forty signatures? I'll give you forty." So got to go, more neighbors, and got a visit from the city maybe two days after I submitted that. And they tell me it's going to be done in March, between March and June thirtieth, I think, fiscal year. So, long story short, a lot of red flags. And I'm thinking, "Who's in charge?" I'm hearing, this is only my second city council meeting. And hearing all this stuff, I'm like, "Oh, my gosh. Who's running the show here?" So, with measure with Laverne, it's like, "Okay, you want me to say yes to this, but you don't take care of our trees." And I drive through Laverne, and I don't see anybody else's trees looking like our trees. And we have a new neighbor just put a new driveway, all the same from the staff. It's just not good. So, I want to end with this. This is what I keep coming back to. "When the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice. But when the wicked man rules, the people groan." I've just heard Muffy was groaning. I'm like, "Can we, can we change page?" I'm thinking, "I don't know all this stuff, but this seems like this was a while ago. So can we, I'm in agreement. Let's move forward. Let's talk about some trees." I propose that maybe, maybe give us opportunity to adopt the trees. I mean, if the trees, if it's an issue of getting, being consistent on trimming those trees, they're beautiful, they're beautiful trees. And really, it winds up the street as, I say, "That area has a diamond in the rock." It's really beautiful. But those trees just take a lot from that area. So, so yes, I would like to table a proposal about adopting those trees. To let us do what we need to do, and it frees the city from the money. Yes, there, you know, there needs to be more talked about, more, more, um, you know, what we can do, what we can't do. You can't chop them off, you know, you can't replace them, take care of them. I've incorporated that. Armstrong incorporated those trees, and it looks spectacular. And everyone, the city's always coming to check in, and I, I have some friends there, so I love Tony Estes. So he's, he's amazing. So you love what we've done. And the neighbors do too. So, that's what I like to say. Let's just change for the page, talk about the trees. Let's make our area even more beautiful.
Fred Boyd, thirty-six-year former resident. Mostly what I was going to say is already said, so thank you for everybody who's cut it short for me. There is a couple of questions. First of all, thank you, Wendy. Let's look through the windshield and not the rearview mirror. We need to do that. But we've got to get through this. I want to thank, um, is he still here? Uh, anyways, from what I understand, uh, Battalion Chief Russell was the proponent to get the dispatch to county. That wasn't mentioned, but I want, you know, the way I understand it, Leo?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm sorry if you're-
No, 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 go ahead.
You're the only fire person here for the tech rack.
Yes.
So I'm saying you're right. Thank you, Chief Russell, okay? Because that's making things a little bit easier for everybody. And I think that, I do want to say that both mayor, mayoral forums were, were great. I think they were all good in formative. There was a lot of people out there. It was really encouraging to see, see that. And I don't want to go into, you know, the details and things like that. But Mayor, you did say one thing that stuck with me, and I got to address that, which is in both mayoral speeches, you said, and took credit for it, that ninety-four percent of the people took a survey, which also the city paid for, you guys paid for the survey. But it came back ninety-four percent favorable, which is wonderful. That's great. But as Bruce mentioned also, the half-truth is missing, which is, and you said that that happened on your watch. Go back and look at the video. I'm not making any of that up. Happened on your watch. Well, all this other stuff that came up tonight also happened on your watch. So you've got to take responsibility for that too. Because you can't take credit for something and not say, "I'm responsible for everything else." So everything else that's been going on here for the last three hours happened on your watch. Okay? So I'll read a little limerick and try and lighten it up, hopefully on the last one. "Next Door Made Us Smear Very. The coyotes are rampant and scary. Pacts, cronyism, lies, threats, and loans, enough to make all of us moan. Vote the third will no longer be wary." That's it. Tim, happy birthday. Hundred and thirty-six of your most close favorite friends. Do you mind with it? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robert Carter. I'm a four-year resident, and I am a member of the Transparent Laverne Political Action Committee. I am sure that some of the citizens here want to place responsibility on the council members for the informational piece that has been distributed to a limited number of households. This is not true. As the PAC operates, independent of any knowledge or influence from any of the council members or mayor, if you have any questions regarding the PAC, please see one of us or leave us a comment on the website. I have heard objections tonight to the amount I, and that's me, contribute. I think it unfortunate that there were no objection when we lent more than fifteen times as much in order to get the Veterans Memorial built earlier or the donations we have made to the University of Laverne or the K-9 program and many others, and too many campaigns. I hope there's nobody in this room that is going to judge me by this one action and completely disavow all the other things that we have done for this community. When another group of concerned citizens began distributing information regarding the issues our city and the council was facing regarding the firefighters' union and the lawsuits, I had hoped that both sides of the issues would be distributed. Unfortunately, that did not happen. Even though all the information was available and obtainable through the Public Records Request Act and the Freedom of Information Act, as nothing had been distributed, I began to investigate on my own and discovered that there was another side to the story yet to be told. This information shed a whole new light on the lawsuits and surrounding issues. I was approached by a group of citizens that had also been looking into the same fact. And we got together and decided the information needs to be presented to all of our fellow citizens. The information is available at facebook.com/transparentlaverne and is posted so that more citizens can have access to the information from the lawsuit, the fire chief's claim, the closed session's discrepancies, power struggles, and such. All of these are now available to everyone for their own review. Unfortunately, we're only able to do a limited mailing to households. So if you did not receive one, please visit our website, and we will try and get one out to you as soon as possible. We often hear the word transparency in government. We have a very good system of government here in Laverne that respects that belief. However, transparency does not mean that the citizens have no obligations. They are expected to make the effort to be informed on both sides of any issue or candidate. The citizens are at the highest level in our community. The citizens hire, by voting, the members of the city council. And in turn, the city council retains the services of the city manager and the city attorney. The city manager manages by utilizing competent and experienced department heads, including police chief, administration, fire chief, public workers, community development, and community service, among others. Please notice, though, that the most important element in this area is the responsible and informed citizen. I noticed a comment on Next Door. It was from Emerald Rikover of the US Navy. Responsibility is a unique concept. You may share it with others, but your portion is not to submit, excuse me, your portion is not diminished. You may delegate it, but it is still with you. You may delegate it, but it is still with you. If responsibility is rightfully yours, no evasion, or ignorance, or passing the blame, and shift the burden to someone else. Unless you can point your finger at the man who is responsible when something goes wrong, then you have never had anyone really responsible. I'm asking that you please take a few minutes, and it will take to read and review the information on our website. These documents are all produced from legal sources. Please read the text messages between the two litigation parties, the Joint Power Insurance Agency, JPI, A letter, joint witness list, emails showing violations of employee HIPAA and privacy rights. Please leave a comment after reading the information, so they know what your thoughts were. Please see the city council meetings of October 15th, 2018, the city council meetings of January 22nd, 29th. The council amendments are on the city website. And please watch the meet the candidates forum from February 13th, 2020, that was held at the Laverne Community Center for more candidate information. Review the comments and draw your own conclusion, and then vote. All this information is there to help you become informed and to make a responsible decision. Please do not relinquish the privilege to be informed and responsible, as the decision will affect the future direction of Laverne and a most important time as we prepare for the changes coming from Gold Line and additional state, federal government requirements. Do this for yourself, for your family, and especially for the children of this wonderful city. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Robert. I have a question, though. And I appreciate what you're saying.
Wait, wait, wait. Sorry, Joyce, you can talk to him afterwards. That's okay.
Sorry.
Anybody else? Okay, we will go to item nine, council comments.
Well, I want to first thank my wife, Patty, for what I'm not sure for allowing me to do this. You must really love me. I just want to say that I have some wonderful people. I'm not going to mention names, but that are part of the campaign that we're going through, and how wonderful they are, and how I could not do this without them. But I really want to say that what's been the most wonderful thing is walking door to door, knocking on the door, and just interacting with our residents. It's probably the most, not sobering, but a really good gauge of who lives in this city. And we're talking mobile home communities, we're talking the middle, center, left, right of Laverne. There's some great people that live here, and it's truly an honor. And I do, I do really think it's an honor to serve this community with all this other stuff going on. You know, the most important thing is to vote your heart, vote reality. And March 3rd, you have till March 3rd, but you can start voting on March 20, or February 22nd. And absentees are already going in, but we truly do live in a beautiful community. The residents are awesome. It's just, they rock. They're rock starters. Thank you.
Well, first, I want to join the others in saying happy birthday, Tim. Fourteen? No, I'm teaching. Twenty-one. You're twenty-one. I do want to also state that voting starts this Saturday. For those who want to do it in person, if you, if you are a vote-by-mail person, you should have already received your ballot. If you haven't, you might want to check with the county registrar. Voting ends on March 3rd, and so please get, do your civic duty and vote. I do want to say that I appreciated comments on the Laverne LV measure. I am a proponent of yes on LV. I think it's the services that we want and the services that we desire that drive that decision. Thank you.
And happy birthday to you. I told you earlier tonight, but... So much attention was given tonight to the mayor's race. But we have so many candidates in this room that are for council. And so really take the time to get to know them, and let's not forget them. There, you know, we have quite a few candidates. I think we're at six, and then one right in. So get a chance to watch the forum if you didn't see it, and then you'll get, you know, have time to meet with them, and, you know, there's two right up there. Wendy's here, Rick's over there. Anybody else in the audience?
Kenny.
Kenny's back there. Yeah. Yes, Jeremy. So get a chance to talk to them. I see, yeah, Wally, and then Rich, Richard? So everybody's in the room, so if you get a chance, talk to them. They all have things to say and what their goals are for the city. Two things I wanted to talk about is what's coming up here, the Gold Line. We have a meeting coming up. It's going to be an open house that we're going to have on March 10th, Tuesday night, at our community center. We are going to have at that time the, our station artist that will be here with the design of what the station's going to look like. So if you have questions, want to see what's going on, come to that meeting. And that will be from 5:30 to 7:30. And that's that. And then for the council, I don't know if you've heard, and anyone that's interested, is softball grand opening is Saturday at 1:00. This Saturday. No, it is February 22nd, this Saturday. Okay. He told, he wrote me tonight and said it was 1:00. So I'll get back to you at once. I'll call you. But just put it on the calendar for Saturday, because we all like to be in the back. And last, Mark, I know you're tired. You've worked so hard. The police department has worked very hard on the county. And I appreciate it. We all appreciate it. And we'll keep working hard to get this passed, and for the community. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Thanks for caring. It's a fabulous city. And don't forget to vote starting Saturday, all the way through the 3rd. Five, or eight o'clock in the morning till 5:00 at night, on the 3rd, it's 7:00 until 8:00. So it's big days, but hopefully, don't wait till the 4th. There's going to be one-fifth of the polling places open on the last day. So it's, you're, don't, you're going to stand in line if you wait till the last day. So, and the last thing is, happy birthday.
And remember, Fairplex tacos. I had one go back. Mark, I just want to say that Mark's been working tirelessly regarding measure LV. And I do also support measure LV. We need this in our community. I'm 100% behind it. I think it's just a great way to grab some money, and I understand, Bruce, and I respect Bruce tremendously, but I'm going to have to say we need this for our community to make sure we can keep it running, so please.
For our kids and grandkids, too.
So one postscript, also, the Fairplex isn't the only place to vote. The library is going to be available for voting for the whole, the other day.
They have tacos over at the library?
It's close to In-N-Out Burger. And then Hillcrest is also another full location for the whole window, 8 to 5. And, you know, I don't know, Hillcrest sometimes has tacos. They have great food. They're beyond tacos.
Our next scheduled, scheduled meeting is March 1st at 6:30. March 2nd, you can hear us on March 2nd. Thank you for coming.